Good evening, folks. Welcome to tonight's City Council meeting and Committee of the Whole meeting. The City Council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk, Ms. Keilich, to please take the roll.
Bowring?
Here.
Malakie?
Here.
Furnish?
Here.
Kilburg?
Casarog?
Here.
Reineke?
Here.
Marx? Mayor?
Here.
Pashki?
Here.
Palmquist?
Here.
We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight it's my honor to surprise this young lady by inviting her to lead us in the pledge, for today is her 17th anniversary with the City of Geneva. Ms. Dawkins, City Administrator, please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Thanks.
Item three, folks, Public Hearings, Special Items and Presentations. Item 3A is to proclaim June the 6th, 2025, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Geneva. I'd like to entertain a motion to so approve. Pashki makes the motion, Bowring makes the second. We have a special guest with us. We have several special guests with us tonight. Who would like to speak on behalf of this? Oh, there you are, Steve. I'm thinking...
Right here.
I know. It's like, what the heck, man? I was looking at all the orange shirts. It's like, Mr. Steve McHugh.
Hello. Thank you.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Burns, City Council. I'm Steve McHugh from Geneva. I'm the Illinois State Co-lead for Be Smart: Secure Storage. And thanks to you, this is my sixth year of being here, for this proclamation, and to honor the victims of gun violence. In addition to the proclamation, one of the best ways to honor the victims is to work to prevent future tragedies. And on that note, I'd like to thank all of you, along with the Geneva Police Department, for doing the work to help prevent and keep the city safe, the community safe. I should probably look at my notes at some point.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
So, the funny part of the people who work to prevent tragedies is that they are successful mainly when nothing happens, you know, when they aren't noticed. But we see you and we thank you. As far as the citizens of Geneva, gun owners, what they can do to prevent accidents and incidents most is to secure your guns when you're not using them. And some people will say, you know, what if I need to get to my gun quickly? You can access a biometric safe within one second. And the cost of a biometric safe, you know, opening it with your fingerprints, is a small fraction of the cost of the gun itself. And just a few notes from the survey that we presented here about a year ago. One out of six households in Illinois has an unsecured gun in their home or in their vehicle. And households with children and teens are no more likely to lock up all of their guns than households without children and teens. And that leads to accidents and suicides. And lastly, vehicles are the leading source of stolen guns. And the main reason is because people store them in their glove compartment or under their seat. So, again, that leads to the biggest source of stolen guns. In addition to that being a danger to the community, that's a big loss, a significant loss in, you know, or a significant problem in terms of the cost and the hassle to the gun owner themselves. So, it's a benefit to themselves to lock up the gun itself. So, thank you again.
We have a motion by Pashki and a second by Bowring to approve June 6th as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Geneva. All in favor of so proclaiming, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? The proclamation has been approved. Steve, would you, could we get a picture?
Sure.
And invite anyone and everyone up with you.
Sure.
Heck, yeah. Do you want the city attorney in the background?
I'm getting out of the way.
I'm not going to ruin the shot.
See, I thought, I thought those headphones were for you. You had them on.
You never know.
You never know. I know.
There you go.
Just for the record, we have an Illinois alum and a Wisconsin alum. Notice, we're just in the division tonight. Nice and close.
As we'll get together?
Yep. Absolutely. Zoom in. Here, hang on. I think that didn't light that. Yeah. Thank you very much. You do extraordinary work, and I know we are grateful for your work.
Thank you.
And it's, it is oftentimes unsung, unknown, unheard of, but we recognize it and we're proud of you. So, thank you. Thank you. Item 3B, as in boy, is to proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month in the City of Geneva. Is there a motion?
No.
Holy fudge puffs. Madam Clerk?
Oh, gosh.
What say you?
I say Pashki.
Okay.
And Mayor.
I didn't stand.
I heard Bowring.
Bowring, Pashki, and Bowring again. Okay.
That's what I said.
And who do we, well, I recognize a couple faces here. Do you guys want to say a few words?
I'd rather not.
Well, okay. You don't, and you don't have to. It's all, it's all good. We have a motion by Pashki, a second by Bowring. Do you want to say something, older person?
No.
No, okay. All those in favor of so proclaiming, the month of June is Pride Month in the City of Geneva. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Fantastic. Can I at least have a photo with you?
Yeah.
I've got some in the car. I'll be right back. I can grab... You're out of the way, city attorney?
I'm getting out of the way.
lawn of City Hall, we will be raising the pride flag. All are invited. We hope you can join us. It's always a lovely occasion, and we look forward to having as many people as possible be there. So, thank you. Item C, 3C, consider the mayor's appointments of Alyssa, is it Platypotus?
Platypotus.
Platypotus, thank you very much. Katie Trappino and Anishka Jane to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee. Motion? Okay. Thank goodness we didn't do that Bowring-Pashki thing. We're going with Bowring and Casarog. Would any of you like to say a few words about your interest in serving? You don't have to, just an opportunity if you'd like. No? This is a good group. Where's, where's, where's Mrs. Manning? Where'd she go? Manning. It's going to be easy meetings with these three, isn't it? It's going to be...
They're already...
Oh, I'm certain they are. Motion by Pashki, the second by Casarog. All in favor of, oh, Bowring, excuse me, the second by Casarog, all in favor of appointing these three distinguished public servants to the Strategic Plan Advisory Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Congratulations. You should have your first paycheck in about four years. We jump into item four, Amendments to the Agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. Those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion, and the floor is open for such a motion. Motion by Casarog, seconded by Pashki. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, the Omnibus Agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to number eight, Municipal Bills for Payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total $2,349,855.41.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items for which can be found in tonight's City Council packet and on the city website.
Older person Bowring has made the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in each council member's packet and available on the city's website. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, the bills have been approved for payment. Committee of the Whole, items are all under the consent agenda, therefore we jump to item 10, Presentation of Ordinances, Resolutions, or Other Items. 10A is Consider Resolution Number 2025-57, Declaring Surplus and Authorizing the Disposal of or Sale of Police Vehicles Without Police Officers in Them and Other Department Property. Motion by Bowring, seconded by Malakie. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. Basically, a housekeeping item. As stated, the resolution for consideration declares surplus items and vehicles that are no longer needed or obsolete or broken. All items will be disposed of or sold as appropriate. If you have specific questions, we do have Chief Passerelli with us this evening.
Any questions for the chief?
Relating to this item.
Hearing none, seeing none, sensing none, all in favor of item 10A, which is Resolution 2025-57, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, Resolution 2025-57 has been approved. Item B, Consider Resolution 2025-58, Authorizing the Purchase of Underground Cable and Material in an Estimated Amount of $2,150,358.34 through Sourcewell Contract for Southeast Development... Southeast Development?
Construction.
Construction Feeders. Thank you. I thought, oh, my God. Construct Feeders. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Bowring, Casarog. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. As stated, the underground electrical materials are available through the Sourcewell Contract. The Sourcewell is a purchasing cooperative that competitively bids and procurement contracts for government and not-for-profit entities. The cable and materials will be used to construct the needed electric circuit feeders and infrastructure to supply electricity to the southeast development area and connect new circuits to the existing City of Geneva infrastructure. With us this evening is Superintendent Holton. If you have any additional questions.
Any questions from the dais for the superintendent? Since this is a substantial amount of money, we will ask for a roll call vote. City Clerk, whenever you're available.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
With eight affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, Resolution 2025-58 has been approved. Item 10C is To Consider Resolution Number 2025-59, Approving a First Amendment to an Economic Development Incentive Agreement between the City of Geneva and Niche Restaurant LLC. Motion by Pashki, seconded by, oh, I know, Bowring again. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay. So, Niche Restaurant LLC has requested an amendment to the ARPA grant agreement approved in December of 2024. An amendment is necessary because there is uncertainty as to whether the expansion plan will be completed as intended due to circumstances beyond Niche's control. The amendment adds eligible costs to allow for improvements at Niche's primary location at 14 South Third. New line items added include tuck pointing, facade renovations, plumbing, and flooring. There is no change to the total amount of the grant award, which was, just for your information, was $40,000. We do have Director Timoshenko with us this evening, and I don't know, is there a representative? Just, okay, Director Timoshenko's here. If you have any additional questions.
Questions from the dais for the Director of Reconnaissance Development. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Casarog?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero absent, and two older persons, excuse me, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, Resolution 2025-59 has been approved. Now, I think my agenda might be a little messed up. Is there still another item?
Yes.
Yes, because I am missing it. This will be fun.
It's an extra small font this week.
This is, this is going to be...
Do you have a glasses?
I do.
It's right there.
Where?
Top of that.
Oh, there it is. Forgive me, folks. It's all Brad's fault. Item 10D, Consider Resolution 2025-60, Authorizing the City to Expend Funds from the Municipal Hotel Operator's Occupation Tax to, to be a presenting sponsor for the Geneva Chamber of Commerce's City Recognized Festivals in the Total Agreement Amount of $50,000 for calendar year 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Casarog, seconded by Bowring. Ms. Dawkins?
The City of Geneva has been working with the Geneva Chamber of Commerce leadership in examining the 30-year-old service agreement that terminated in August of 2024. To reimagine the relationship between the city and the chamber in a way that complements each organization's strengths and advances mutually beneficial strategic goals. Recognizing that the city is a governmental entity and governed by state statute, and the chamber is a member-supported 501(c)(6) organization, it was important to the city to ensure that any funding provided complies with state statute and maintains each organization's independence. As a non-home role community, tax revenues collected from the Municipal Hotel Operator's Occupation Tax are to be expended solely to, one, promote tourism and conventions, or, two, attract non-resident overnight visitors. In addition, no funds shall be used to advertise or promote new competition in the hotel business. In keeping with statutory requirements for the city's council's consideration this evening, is a resolution authorizing the city to become a presenting sponsor for the Geneva Chamber of Commerce's Four City Recognized Festivals. Those are Swedish Days, the Geneva Arts Fair, Festival of the Vine, and Christmas Walk in the total aggregate amount of $50,000 for calendar year 2025, which falls within city fiscal year '26 budget. As a presenting sponsor, the city meets the requirements of the state statute, and it enables the chamber flexibility to use the funds as the chamber sees fit. I would note that the chamber board chair has advised the city that they are supportive of the resolution as presented. And again, any questions can be directed either to myself, Director Timoshenko, or Mayor Burns, or older person Casarog.
Are there any questions of the dais for either of those four folks? City Clerk, please take the roll. And I will be voting on this as well.
Casarog?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Mayor Burns?
Aye.
With nine affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and two older persons absent, Resolution 2025-60 has been agreed to by this council. We're now at public comment, folks. Anyone joining us this evening, any public comment you wish to share? It's your chance to speak, our chance to listen.
First and foremost, I would like to thank Mayor Burns for making it possible to simplify the source, funding source for, between the city and the chamber. Without his leadership on this matter, anyway, he did a great job. We're done. Thank you. For those of you that are not aware, The Chronicle has just released its Best of the Fox. 69 businesses from the chamber received Best of. Many of them were multiple category winners. About one and a half times that amount received one of the best. Geneva is, you know, we are very blessed to have a very successful, vibrant, independent business community, and they work hard at what they do, and they do it well. Also, would like to just point out, in food industry news, this is a Chicago-area restaurant publication, and our very own Casey from Foxfire received the chef profile last week. So, congratulations to Casey.
Indeed.
And last, but certainly not least, it's crunch time for Swedish Days. It is coming up, and we are still in need of volunteers. If you would please reach out to Paula at the chamber, she will be more than happy to provide you with a list of all the little vacancies that we still have. And thank you, Larry, for your already volunteering to help us out at the craft beer tent. Do appreciate that very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else about anything? Now's your chance. Join us at the podium. If you want to look over your right shoulder, we have a new clock at City Hall. Isn't that cool?
Which one's right?
So, Steve, if you're going to go about three minutes, I would have said something.
That one's right.
That one's actually tied to the synchronicity of the world.
And iPhones.
Oh, yeah. Could have saved $14, and I'd buy that thing. New business from the dais. Council members, anything at all? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting.
So moved.
Casarog makes the motion. All in favor of adjourning the City Council meeting, please indicate by saying, "Nice clock."
Nice clock.
We'll adjourn, folks. We'll take just a moment before we switch over to the Committee of the Whole.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Committee of the Whole meeting. Tonight is Monday, June 2nd, and I am older person Amy Mayer. I represent the fourth ward, along with Martha Pashki. I call this meeting to order. And first item of business is number two. What did I forget?
Note we, Kilburg and Marx are absent.
Note that older person Kilburg and older person Marx are absent this evening. All of the members are here.
No.
No. Okay. I need a motion to approve the Committee of the Whole minutes from May 19th, 2025.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Item 3A, Consider Draft Resolution Authorizing the Execution of a Development Economic Incentive Agreement with Venture One Acquisitions LLC.
So moved.
Thank you. Administrator Dawkins?
So, in June 2024, the city annexed a 55-plus acre parcels east of Kirk Road, south of Old Kirk Road, and north of Fabian Boulevard, and approved an industrial development plan for Venture One. Venture One has entered into a contingent lease for a build-to-suit with a fourth-generation family-owned and operated company with numerous locations worldwide, recognized for high-quality design and services. The tenant will fully occupy the site as a corporate headquarters that will support 150-plus employees with office, manufacturing, and warehousing components for a term of not less than 12 years. The tenant's build-to-suit provisions will eliminate approximately half of the truck docks and all of the trailer parking, and construction will be LEED-certified. To complete the lease, Venture One is seeking economic assistance from the city. The draft economic incentive agreement contemplates the reduction of city fees, not including third-party, in the estimated amount of $250,000. This consideration will mirror the fee waiver provided to MWI developer of the 211 acres into four. Completion of the project is in Geneva's best interest, as an owner-occupied corporate headquarters with manufacturing components and limited warehousing enhances employment opportunities, will result in the construction of Dawn Boulevard and Kirk Road signalization, and will further the water main loop to connect with MWI water main, saving TIF for an estimated $1 million in future bond indebtedness. If you have specific questions, we do have Director Timoshenko with us this evening, and I also believe we have representatives from Venture One here as well.
Does anyone have any questions? Older person Bowring?
Sorry, I don't have a question. I'm just pleased to see work going forward with this project, and I wanted to commend our staff and express enthusiasm to the developer that you've found a tenant interested in this that you can proceed work with. And I was excited to see it's going to be LEED-certified. So, but it sounds like a great opportunity for Geneva, and, you know, just what we were hoping for when this project was being first considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Older person Malakie.
Just real quick question. And I don't know, Kathleen, if you know or not, I was just, was wondering tentative dates for putting shovels in the ground and anything like that yet, or no?
We expect this early, very early summer construction to start.
Over this year?
Yes.
Okay.
This year.
Do they have an idea of when the, the new tenant is looking to possibly, you know, be indoors and...
I think it's probably about a year.
About a year out?
Yeah. By the time everything is completed.
Okay.
But I think they have a more aggressive timeline, but I think within a year is probably what we'll see.
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah. And I also like, you know, I applaud the developer and the tenant for, you know, getting LEED-certified, you know? So, that's, that's great there. I'd love to see LEED silver if there's a way to check some more boxes, but, you know, LEED-certified is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Sensing, older person...
Would you be kind enough to just unpack the financial incentives, this package that we have for the corporation?
Sure. What we're doing is we're giving a reduction, 50% reduction, in city fees that are not third-party fees, because our third-party fees are pass-through, and our other fees would be reduced. And it's expected to be about a $250,000 reduction in fees. And what we were trying to get at was a certain per-square-foot cost to be competitive, and that's what we worked toward.
Are there other financial implications of this in terms of tax relief going forward?
Well, you have, you'll have a significant new industrial facility, which will be on the tax rolls as soon as it gets going. The assessor starts to assess properties during construction, and then it is leveling up as the property is occupied. So, you'll see a significant amount of new property tax, and then you'll have a new utility user, which will contribute greatly to the enterprise funds of electric and water and sanitary. And... of electric and water and sanitary. And then you'll have an employment, an employer, which will have positive ramifications for the community to have new, you know, employees coming every day to work here. And they will be good jobs from a corporate, you know, headquarters company. So there's, there's a lot of positives there. And then there's also, you know, significant site work that you're going to see, signalized intersections, the new Don Boulevard, the looping of the water main, and other utilities that will be extended and completed. So that's all really good for the system.
This may be for the, for the owner. Would you plan to make the building more brand-specific for the, for the renter? Or is it going to be more a typical industrial building in looks?
It'll be a build-to-suit.
So it may have a different aesthetic than the very neutral warehouse we see.
Madam Chair, forgive me for the interruption. I believe this is not relevant, as we are only talking about incentives this evening. A site plan will be submitted at the June 16 city council meeting for full review.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna see this project again?
Absolutely.
This is just for the incentive?
Yeah, they're gonna bring in a, they're gonna bring in a, what's it called?
A site plan.
A site plan's gonna be actually, actual size.
700,000 square feet, yeah. Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Then let's, let's vote. Roll call.
Bowring?
Aye.
Malakki?
Aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Let's go on to the next item. 3B. Consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for social worker services with the Association of Individual Development, AID. Thank you. Bowring and Casarag. Okay.
So, the City of Geneva has utilized the services of the Association for Individual Development, AID, since 2014. They provide a social worker on-call 24 hours per day, seven days per week, and a social worker who provides services from the police facility two days per week. The agreement for your consideration is a continuation of these services. The social workers provide a valuable service to the community and to the police department. They are regularly utilized to assist with those experiencing mental health crisis, homelessness, homelessnessness... death notifications, hoarding, and much more. In fiscal year '25, AID provided support to 134 clients and has assisted the police department in reducing repeat calls for service. With us, we do have Chief Passarelli, and I may, if I keep stuttering like this, I might need some services as well.
Does anyone have any questions for the chief? Alderperson Bowring?
This is not a question. I just wanted to say I was really pleased that even when we weren't able to find grant funding for this, we continued to keep the social worker coming in twice a week. And I guess, depending on input from the police department, I would love for us to explore expanding that if we possibly could in future budget years. So I think it's useful to know what the per-day cost is. But I guess, yeah, I don't know. So this is more for kind of a longer consideration. But if it seems like that would be utilized, I'd love to have that available a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions? Alderperson Ryan?
Yep, I've got a question for the chief. This has been progressing for about 10 years now. And I wonder if you have any impressions about... I'm interested in outcomes and quality of services, and what your impressions are in terms of... This has been in place for some time, and how are the officers utilizing it? And what's their response to it?
Right, we've certainly adjusted the method in which we use them over time. We've created a referral form we've probably had in place for three or four years now. So the officers will respond to a call. And if there's any need for those services, they'll complete a referral form, which we then give to the social worker, who follows up specifically on those two days that she's in the building. We have seen a reduction in calls. They are very quick to engage with our officers and go out on these calls that they're dealing with. As example, they're working through some hoarding cases now, and they're intimately involved with the officers trying to get this figured out. So I think they provide an invaluable service to us. They have a pretty busy client list that comes in the building and visits them for appointments on the days that they're in the building. And they go out and visit homes, too. So we're very satisfied. I think we, they do a really good job for us.
That's great. Anyone else?
The current contract and everything is pretty, fits in well with our, our city and the department and everything?
It does. Absolutely.
Comfortable with the amount of time and what the money spent so far, and...
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, certainly something we'll look at in the future. I mean, I think that's the way the world is going. We know with, you know, the mental health care and CESA, which is an act that deals with mental health, that we're going to have to continue down that path. And again, they provide a great service. So it's certainly something that we would look at as we go into future budget years.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Sensing none? Let's, I think voice vote is sufficient on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Next item. Consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Fox Excavating at a cost of $535,685.40 with allowance to approve up to $53,568.54 in change orders for a not-to-exceed amount of $589,253.94 for water main replacement at Delnor Health and Wellness Center. Thank you. Pashke, Malakki?
Okay, so the fiscal year '26 budget has funds allocated for the replacement of the water main at the Delnor Health and Fitness Center. Three bids were received with the low bid provided by Fox Excavating. Staff is recommending that a 10% contingency be included in the overall not-to-exceed amount to account for any unforeseen field changes that may occur. You have specific questions? We have with us Superintendent Van Gescum.
Alderperson Casarag?
Hey, Superintendent. I just was curious how old the water main is and if there was any other circumstances besides just age that caused it to need to be replaced. But I don't know, maybe it's a timely replace. I'm just not sure.
No, it was installed in 1988, if my recollection or if my memory serves me right, which is very unusual for us to replace a water main of that age. It's due to corrosive soils in the area. The water main is just deteriorating rapidly over, just in that area. We haven't had any other problems throughout the campus except for that area. So, yeah.
Your boss is knocking on wood behind you.
Yeah, so, I don't blame him.
What are, are we doing anything to, using a different material? Or is the material now already better than it was?
We're using PVC, C900 water main pipe, so it will not be affected by the, by the soil.
Okay, that's all I was wondering. Thank you. Sure.
All right, thank you. Alderperson Malakki?
Are we expanding service out there with the amount of growth that hospitals have been doing over the last couple of years? Or it's just sort of the same?
No.
Just basically a straight replacement?
Yeah, it, for the most part, has been the same. When they do make an improvement out there or an expansion, then the water main has kind of moved in different areas, but it's all done by, by the hospital.
Okay.
So, but nothing's really expanded much as far as the, the service area. It's, it was kind of planned that way when, when the hospital was built, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else? Sensing none? Voice vote should work on this one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous? Good. Let's go to item number 3D. Consider draft resolution authorizing fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 electric tree trimming contract to Asplund Tree Specialist. Let's give it to Palmquist. She's had enough seconds.
So a bid was advertised for fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27 electric line clearance tree trimming. Three companies responded. The low bidder was Asplund Tree Specialist. A third-year option was also included to be exercised at the city's discretion. Asplund Tree Specialist has provided line clearance tree trimming service to the city in the past, and their work has been to standards and acceptable. The recommendation, the recommended approval this evening would be contingent upon legal review by the city attorney, which is currently pending. Additional questions? We do have Superintendent Holton with us this evening.
Alderperson Casarag?
I was curious who we used last year. Was it, it wasn't Asplund, was it?
No, it was Lewis.
Lewis. I could not read in the packet. I don't know, I was having trouble expanding my screen to read the whole bid thing. It was, it was really small. Was there big cost savings with Asplund over Lewis?
For this bid, yes. Asplund did bid on the last contract, and it was swapped. So Lewis was the cheapest at the time. So...
Okay. I was just kind of trying to sort that out in my head. But I don't have any problem with Asplund or anything like that. I know they're well-known and do a great job, so, thank you. You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, voice vote is sufficient, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, unanimous. Item number 3E. Consider draft resolution authorizing a contract with QP Testing LLC in the amount of $57,832.50 with authorized change orders not to exceed 10% of the bid price for commission testing services for the Geneva Business Park III substation. Malakki with the second.
Okay, so as part of the final phase of the substation construction, all of the control wiring and new apparatus must be field-tested before being energized. It is best practice to have a third-party contractor perform these services. Bids were received from four vendors with the lowest responsible bid from QP Testing in an estimated amount of $52,575. Oh, sorry, Superintendent Holton's here for any additional questions.
Anyone have any questions?
I just want to mention, or I might confuse the total you just said is different than what's on the agenda.
Yeah, so the one includes the contingent...
Okay.
Anyone have any questions? All right. Voice vote, then. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, there we go. That brings us to public comment. Does anyone have anything they'd like to say? All right. New business from the dais? All right. I'll... A motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, there we go.